Ladies and gentlemen, this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd ask that you please stand, and I'm going to ask Councilman -- where's the clerk? I want to ask Councilwoman Diggs to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will Councilman Curran please lead us in prayer?
At 10:00 PM on October 11th, 1492, an Italian, Christopher Columbus, sailing for the Court of Spain, ended a 3,300 mile journey by sighting a light on the island of San Salvador. He was 6,800 miles short of his true destination, Japan. However, after the daring voyage, a fervent salve Regina was sung by all. While we cannot sing the same prayer tonight, we gather together to remember the discovery of the two great American continents, their diverse cultures and their courageous people. We seek the guidance and the wisdom of the creator of all continents as we work on the task of governance before us, to ensure our citizens of liberty and justice enforcement of our common law. Law is that by which no city shall or nation can survive. As John Adams said, "That form of government which unites all, the virtue, honor, and fears of its citizens, and reverence and obedience to the law, is the only one in which liberty is secure." We ask God's blessing on all those serving now to defend our way of life, their families, and all here present tonight. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon, Negerchad, Johnson, Trumbetta, Calatrino, Perkins, Disconti, Gnee, Estuzito, Sadi, Cotto, Basso, Patello, Diggs, Michael, Curran, Riley, Saraceno, Bigberry, Stanley, Pabatet.
There being 20 present and one absent, please let the record reflect that Councilman Trumbetta is out of town this evening. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I'd ask that any member of the public that wishes to address the council, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda. In addition to that, you must be a taxpayer and/or resident of the City of Danbury to address the council this evening. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. O'Callaghan. Yeah, please, and also state your name and address for the record, and the microphone's over here. Thank you.
Hello, Jesus is the Lord, my name's Gerardo Callahan. Good evening, I'm from 136 Pembroke Road, Unit 43. I just want to talk, Mayor, about Item 8 on the 287G, the agreement that requesting between ICE agents and local law enforcement. Let me just grab this thing.
Let's ask if you have a cellphone, that please put it on vibrator, turn it off.
The ICE agreement at 287G, first of all, I want to say I'm grateful that the City Council is taking a step in this direction to try to make some immigration law enforcement, something that we've been looking forward to for quite a few years. But, you know, certainly I'm in support of that. And I just want to bring up a few things about 287G briefly. 287G is, you know, is helping local law enforcement by receiving training from ICE, or, you know, from the immigration authorities. And, you know, part of 287G allows assessments by the agents from ICE and the local authorities on where to put their stresses on the immigration enforcement. And with that, certainly, the big problem in Danbury has been, the heart of the problem really in the whole United States, is the fact that businesses in this country against criminal violation of the United States Code are aiding and abetting illegal aliens by encouraging them to reside here, by hiring them, renting to them, and so forth. This is the invitation why they're here in Danbury. As anyone knows, at Kennedy Square and other locations throughout Danbury, it's the businesses that are drawing them here, and this is the problem throughout the country. So, the heart of the problem is that, and of course, local enforcement and immigration law allows the local enforcement in that area as well, and that is called 1324 of the U.S. Code. So, what I'm hoping will happen here is that when the 287G training, well certainly, and the Chief of Police, Baker, will, you know, assess this, and I know they're going to have an investigation on this, but when they make the memorandum of agreement with ICE, and they want to see where the needs are, I hope they focus on this. Because without that, certainly, nobody is going to round up 20,000 illegal aliens in Danbury, nobody's going to round up 20 or 30 million illegal aliens in the United States. But, if local citizens, businesses, American citizens, or legal residents, whether they're an immigrant or not, are arrested or fined and punished for the criminal violation of the law, then certainly, it would take much less enforcement. Two or three, just like a traffic ticket or a speeding ticket, somebody gets a $200 fine or faces jail time for some violation of law, he's going to watch his step on the next time. And without the draw of businesses hiring them, then certainly, they won't be here. So that's the main trust of what I wanted to say on this. Also, I want to remind everyone that 287G is not going to be available for training for two years. I've talked with Immigration and Reform Law Institute in Washington, D.C., and it's a two-year waiting period for 287G training. Yet, we have a letter now from Chief Baker that says, right now, under the authority of the immigration law, it allows for local enforcement without any federal permission of these criminal violations. And furthermore, which is something that I've talked about with some of the mayor and some of the council members over the last two years, furthermore, the Danbury City Charter has a provision in it where you can incorporate any provision of the U.S. Code. Any nationally recognized codes can be adapted in an ordinance, can be actually written into an ordinance. And the importance of that is, and of course, this is sanctioned, the City Charter, by the state law of Connecticut. And again, even without that specific ordinance, you have the ability to enforce federal immigration law locally, even without that. But by putting that in an ordinance, it will allow for prosecution of an immigration violation, such as picking up illegal aliens every day at Kennedy Square, in the local court. And there was no need to have to send them over to federal court and so forth. It would be just like any other prosecution of a motor vehicle violation or anything else.
So, Callahan, if you could kind of wrap up your comments with --
Okay, in finality, I just want to remind everybody that the people that's hurt by all this in this country is, you know, we've lost jobs, I'm a contractor, I've lost a lot of jobs, and my wages are down, because it's impossible to compete with people who are making money here at $10 an hour, which is worth the equivalent of $200 an hour or something like that in their own country. It'd be like us, American citizens, going to another country and earning 10 to 20 or 30 times our income in one year, coming back here a millionaire. We can't compete with that, and that's of course why it's very important to enforce this. And also, it's a big blow to the overall society, the hospitals, the crime, and, you know, like I said, the wages are down, but the immigrants, the legal immigrants who have come here to become naturalized citizens of the United States are getting a slap in the face. Their wages are going down too, and they're suffering just like everyone else. So, that's the final thing I just want to say, and I hope that when you consider these things, that you will look to incorporate immigration law in the City of Danbury, by the power of the Charter.
All the way in the back, and then Mrs. Halford. Ladies and gentlemen, if we're going to clap after each speaker, we're not going to get through too many speakers. We only have a half an hour by City Charter, so please refrain from clapping, and try to keep your comments as tight as possible, so that most people want to say something can be heard. And just your name and address for the record, please.
Eileen Sapola, 124 Coal Pit Hill Road, Unit Number 62. I just wanted to say tonight that I am opposed to taxpayers' dollars being used to fund a program like this that is driven out of fear and prejudice. Mayor Bowden was quoted in the News Times the other day, saying, "In the right circumstances, it seems like a positive program." What can be positive about ruining people's lives? Was the city not just sued last week by the Danbury Eleven? I can see a flood of new lawsuits coming in as the police department tried to take over immigration reform. Can Danbury afford these potential endless litigation? I doubt it, they're very expensive. The nation, not just Danbury, Connecticut, immigration system is broken and badly needs repair. Whose responsibility is it to fix it? Our mayor? The City Council? Our police department? ICE with their terrorizing raids? The answer is none of the above. President Bush and our elected officials in Congress need to enact comprehensive immigration reform. Legalization that establishes a safe and humane immigration system consistent with moral values. Not our mayor, not our common council, and not our local police department. They are not equipped to handle immigration reform. In closing, I would like to say to Mayor Bowden, the common council, and all those in favor in passing this program, how are our tax dollars, how much will they rise to run this program, and the inevitable coming lawsuits? Now, I also had another thing to say, and I was told not to say it, but I just feel it's important. I wanted to let you all know that I believe in heaven, and heaven is a place of people of all nations, all languages, and all legal statuses. So if you don't like the changing face of Danbury, Connecticut, you probably will not like heaven either. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I warn one group over here, I'm going to warn everybody, please, if you continue to clap, you won't get a chance to speak, and I know that people want to say something. So, Mrs. Halford, you're next, and then Mrs. Waller, and name and address for the record.
Yes, for the record, my name is Christine Halfar, I live at 8 Settlers Hill Road, and I'd also like to speak on Item 8, which asks for a study of the feasibility of the Danbury Police Department participating in ICE access. At the center of ICE access is 287G, which was one of the 1996 amendments to the Immigration and Naturalization Act. So now, for more than 10 years, local police across the country have had the opportunity to partner with federal immigration authorities. However, out of the thousands and thousands of municipal, county, and state agencies across the country, only 60 have done so. Julie Myers, who oversees ICE, calls this tremendous interest on the part of local agencies, hardly. But why so few? Because, with the exception of this handful, agencies have figured out that local police enforcing federal immigration law is an appallingly bad idea. The job of local police is to serve, protect, and police their communities. For this, they rely on the trust built up over years of being in neighborhoods, responding to calls, helping people in emergencies, and just being visible. If they are successful, people come to them when they see something suspicious, or if they have been a victim or witness to a crime. In turn, the police know they can go to the neighborhood and get information they need when they're trying to solve a crime. So what's going to happen when the Danbury police start serving as immigration law officers? Immediately, the department loses the trust and cooperation of a sizable part of the community. If people are afraid of being deported, or having themselves or members of their family undergo immigration investigations, they will no longer come to the police when they witness a crime or a victim. Criminals will quickly find out they can operate with impunity, and dangerous situations will go unreported, the whole community suffers. Enforcing immigration law also means there are fewer resources available for solving serious and violent crimes. Our police department currently is just adequately staffed. That would stretch them even further. Finally, the complexity of federal immigration law leaves local police open to lawsuits if they make a mistake or exceed their authority. Most local agencies know that ICE access is a bad idea, and it's a bad idea for Danbury too. Now, I expect that sometime in the winter, after November, there will be a report back to the council that draws this very same conclusion. So at this point, I can only wonder why this item is on the agenda at all.
Mrs. Waller?
I'm Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue, and I was asked to read this. I am writing to you about Agenda Item Number 5, donation of a monument. I think the basic idea of honoring the various groups in town, groups that have come to America, has merit. I am not in favor of having a walk of history, though, on the grounds of City Hall. I feel City Hall should be ethnically neutral, a place where all Americans and guests can feel they are treated equally and fairly. We have an estimated 42 cultural groups in Danbury. The cultural organizations who are able to donate a monument, are not able to donate a monument, will not be represented in these groups. Instead of this donation, I would prefer a timeline of stepping stones, starting with the American Indians, and moving chronically towards our newest arrivals. The people who walk the timeline would feel included in the history of Danbury. As a racially and ethnically mixed American, I probably would not feel represented by the monuments donated by the cultural organizations. In a city's attempt to be inclusive, I fear some will be excluded. The Vespucci Club has been very generous in their response to City Hall's call. I just would have preferred a slightly amended call, and it was sent to me by Margaret Mitchell, she's in Colorado, but she follows what goes on here, and she asked me to read it. Can't get away with the thing, sir.
Thanks, Lynn. Tell her we said hello. Marciano?
Police Marciano, 179 Long Ridge Road, Danbury. I would like to address the distortions, misstatements, and other items that some of the people before me have told you about, the number 8, the ICE. The proposition that the mayor is seeking is a case of the federal government funding the training of our policemen in Danbury to facilitate any ICE workings here in Danbury. It is not a taxpayer-in-Danbury-only item, and they will not be charging you as a taxpayer more money, nor will the police be in any way changed or overburdened because of this. According to everything that I have read, all the police have taken a vow to uphold the laws of our country, and that does not exclude them to Danbury, Connecticut. It includes federal and local laws. Now, if a bank robber, which is a federal offense, was caught in Danbury by our policemen, would there be such an outcry? No, there wouldn't, because everybody would want the perpetrator to be caught, and if our police were able to do that, they'd all pat him on the back. This is no different, and it should be addressed in the same way. ICE is doing their job, the Danbury police can assist them, and they can find out and train how this is best done to treat people who are in this country illegally, and should not be here, and our laws apply to them. They do not just apply to legal citizens of Danbury. This applies to people who are in this country illegally. And I wish people would read Article 8, Section 1324 and 25 of our U.S. Code to inform themselves of just who is here legally and who is not. Thank you.
Somebody had their hand, come on. Remember, please, no clapping.
Jean Heslop, 10 Moran Avenue, Danbury. First of all, I think that to equate people who have crossed the border, or possibly people who are here on expired visas, with, you know, bank robbers, is a little extreme. Secondly, I would like to say that as a City of Danbury, I find this an unacceptable use of my tax dollars. Whether it's my local taxes, or whether it's my federal taxes, I am still forced to contribute to this ordinance here in Danbury by my tax dollars. Serious crimes that were committed here in Danbury would go unreported by people under this kind of system. People would be terrified to come forward and talk with the police about anything they feared. On the other hand, a witch hunt climate could easily ensue under this environment, where people, you know, hell, their neighbor was making noise one night late, let's call ICE and have ICE knock on their door. Let's call the Danbury police and have ICE knock on their door, whether or not they're here legally, without any form of proof. Now, so that leads to an environment where anybody can be harassed under any circumstance. Ridiculous. I fear that it is xenophobia and racism that are fueling a lobby in our local and our national governments, contributing to this environment where this ordinance could even be proposed. I really urge you, think twice. We're already facing a lawsuit for possible civil rights violations, we're already hearing rumors of racial profiling. Under this circumstance, those accusations would increase. Please don't expose the City of Danbury, a diverse and multicultural society, to this sort of tearing apart of the fabric which has always made the city what it is. Jean Heslop?
Did you get her address? Thank you. Any other member of the public?
Last person. Ken Gucker, 89, Payden Arm Road, most of you already know who I am. Want to speak on Number 8 on the agenda? I can't help but wonder the timing of this ordinance coming up now. And I can't understand why, all of a sudden, we are dealing with this. From what I've read about 287G, this combining of our police force with the ICE unit would be nothing more than giving the police the ability to go after felons who are here illegal. It is not for immigration enforcement. We don't even know if the State of Connecticut's going to even let us do this. So I don't even understand why we're even discussing this without the facts. We don't know if the governor's going to let us do this, we don't know if the Attorney General's going to let us do this. So I have great question on why we are even discussing this now. I do agree with the first speaker, as far as we need to go after the people who are hiring illegals, not the illegals themselves, it's supply and demand. Anybody that you talk to in the street, door knocking, knows that. In fact, everybody that I've spoken to isn't discussing immigration as their issue, they're discussing overdevelopment. So I have great question. Most political scientists would frame this as an October surprise. We're throwing this out there for the public to mull over their head for the next three weeks before an election. It's wrong. This is politics, and we're dealing with people's lives in this case, and I find it highly insulting. As many of you know, I'm running for office in the second ward, because my neighbors had asked me to run. But what convinced me to run for office was attending these meetings. And I haven't been too happy, and this ordinance just pushes that farther. So, the other thing that we've had an issue with, I'm concerned how this is going to burden the police department. We're now going to have the police department going out to enforce immigration laws. Anytime I go speak against something at the zoning board, and I bring up traffic, and people talk about speeders, and things of that sort, and I get up and say, "You people don't realize what happens in this neighborhood," the applicant and the attorney stands up and says, "Well, enforce your laws." We don't have enough police officers at this particular time to enforce these laws. The street that I live on is like Indianapolis 500.
Mr. Gucker, you're really getting off track.
Well, I'm just, but my point is that I'll bring it back to the ICE thing, as far as our police officers have plenty to do. They don't need to be adding this added on, and I feel until we have answers from our state officials, I don't think we should even be discussing this. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mary Collins, and I live at 2 Frontier Lane in Danbury. I have two things, actually. I'm from Italian-American and Irish ancestors, and they were treated poorly when they came here. I really understand the idea for the monument, but I also agree with the speaker, the letter that came, where I feel something a little subtler, perhaps, that would honor people in a continuum in history would be kinder and easier for kids to follow. And I moved to the city because of its diversity, and for my son to not be in the world that we live in today, it's a diverse world. Our children need to talk to each other, we need to talk to each other. So what is our vision for our community? And I think if we have a continuum like that, it would be helpful. And I think this goes into the Number 8 on the agenda, too. And I really do worry about the hatred that I read about in the paper, and I really do feel it, it's more racist than not, and it's hard to say that out loud, because I kept thinking, growing up, "Well, we've gotten through that," but we really haven't as a country, and we need to keep discussing it, and being very, very careful, I feel, when we bring up something like this and cross those boundaries. So, that's what I wanted to say.
Sunny Ann Rosasco, 31 Hillside Avenue. Okay, Sunny Ann Rosasco, 31 Hillside Avenue in Danbury. In reference to Item Number 8, this is --
In reference to item number eight, this is very... Yeah, oh, there. This, can everybody hear now? Okay. This is sorely needed here in Danbury. I think this should have been addressed a long time ago. I urge Mr. Bowden and the rest of you, the council, to adopt this measure.
Thank you, Joel Yuricek, 44 Olympic Drive, Danbury. Just a brief statement on item eight. Most of you know me. I'm just a simple country bookkeeper, and I try to keep things, you know, simple in perspective. I just don't understand why people want to make this issue about race, about woe is me, whatever. It's about enforcing laws. And if we can give our police department another tool to make this town a little safer for everybody, to enforce the laws easier, I say, go for it. This is long overdue, and for those council people who signed this petition, thank you very much.
Clapping, please, all the way in the back.
Manuel Lima, 32 Farview Avenue, Danbury. I would like to speak on item eight as well. I am, I have just given back my camera, and I'm here as a Danbury citizen, not as a journalist. And I would like to speak on the fact of a person, the lady that spoke right before the gentleman just came up on the, with the purple top, and I will, it saddens my heart, and it really does, as a member of this community, to agree with her, that unfortunately, we have, in fact, let the facts and the real truth of this discussion of immigration take the better of our city and become a racial issue. I speak on that on my own accord, by my own experience. As you can all can see, I am not fair skinned, and I don't have blond hair and blue eyes, and I see that unfortunately, I am getting very mixed reactions, and I am undergoing prejudice when people don't know me, they don't know that I've been here and I was raised in Danbury. I went through Broadview Middle School, Danbury High School, my Western Connecticut State University student. But a lot of people, when they look at me, because they don't have enough information, because they just absorb what they hear about this whole illegal versus legal immigration issue, they just look at me as if I, I am an undocumented immigrant, which is the right term in my point. And I want people to really focus on when we're bringing these federal issues down to a municipal level, and when we're dealing with people in our community who are not educated enough about these issues, we are going to cause people who are caught in the middle to suffer the consequences of this discussion, which should really have been happening, in my point of view, at the local level. Granted, yes, we do deal with some of the effects of immigration in general, legal and illegal, in our municipal level, but only the federal government can really provide us a solution so that we can also reap the benefits of that solution at a local level. And I think that immigrants' communities, especially the new immigrant groups, that suffer the same that the Irish suffer, now it's the Ecuadorian, the Brazilian communities, they're going to come full circle. And I just hope that 10, 20 years from now, we're going to look back and we're just going to laugh as a community about this, because we're going to really praise all these different communities for all the good, positive things they've given to Danbury, and not just this hatred and this very dense atmosphere that we have in our city right now. Thank you.
Lima, L-I-M-A. This will be the last speaker this evening. Pat, you've got about a minute and a half.
Pat Cadet, 19 Lakeview Drive. I want to thank you for having this discussion tonight, because it got me out of bed after five days. This is very important to Danbury, as you all know, and I feel sorry for all you men and women in our council and our lovely mayor, because you've got a big decision to make. Everybody tries to do what's better for Danbury, we know it, for everybody in here, and this will be a help. A lot of people we hear on television are complaining that the federal government is not doing their job, not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and once they start trying to do it, people are criticizing it. 287G is important, and I think everybody in this room knows it. So please, please vote for it, so that our police department can be helped, you guys can be helped, the mayor can be helped. It can't be bad.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public speaking portion of our session this afternoon. Gerard, you're, you can, you're like so out of order right now. You can drop it off, and we'll take a look at it. Okay? All right, okay. There are several announcements that we have on your desk, council. Just want to point out a couple of important events. October 4th, the firefighter of the year dinner will be at Anthony's Lake Club. This year's honoree is firefighter Sean Delory. We also have the flag raising here for Columbus Day at 9:00 a.m. Also, St. Anne's has an event going on well in the evening that night. City Hall will be closed on October the 8th, in honor of Columbus Day. And we're having the dedication for the Steve Kaplantis Memorial Field at Broadview Middle School at 11:00 a.m. on October the 13th. So please put that on your calendar to attend. The NAACP is having a celebration march. We're rededicating the naming of Dr. Samuel Boulevard. I believe we may flip that around, and we may actually start at New Hope and walk here to City Hall versus going from City Hall up to here. That's still open for some discussion, depending on the construction. So stay tuned on that. We'll let you know about that. And there's some other items and events that are listed out here as well. We encourage you to take a look at those. Also, you can contact my office to find out best times to attend that. We have two wedding anniversaries this month. Tom and Valerie Sadi have a wedding anniversary on October the 8th. It's their one-year anniversary. And Shay and Monica Negashat have a wedding anniversary on October the 23rd. And that will conduct our announcements for this evening. With that, minutes, please.
Your honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Seaberry. Is there any discussion, any, excuse me, any deletions, changes, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Minutes are accepted as proposed. Madam Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, your honor. The consent calendar for October 2nd, 2007. Seven, receive the communication and approve the Danbury train station lease proposed budget for the fiscal year 2007 and 2008. Ten, receive the communication, authorize the assignment of real property tax liens on the grant list as of October 1st, 2006, to the American tax funding. Eleven, receive the communication, accept the proposed easement for a fire hydrant at 50 Beaver Brook Road. Twenty, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Twenty-one, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Twenty-two, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Twenty-three, receive the report, approve the recommendation of the committee, and refer to public hearing. Twenty-four, receive the report as revised and approve the recommendation of the committee. Twenty-five, receive the report as revised and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, your honor.
Welcome, Madam Majority Leader. With your pleasure, Councilman Saraceno.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to ask that the record reflect in report number 24 and 25, that committee member Councilman Perkins' name was omitted, and that he was not able to attend.
Seeing no objection, then we'll have the record reflect for those two items. Any further discussion about the consent calendar? This is Tavasak.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to request that item number 20 be removed from consent.
Item 20 is so removed. Any other discussion about the consent calendar? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor of accepting the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ice habit motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, snow emergency protocols. Dear county council members, anticipating the arrival of snow in the coming months, I am requesting an ad hoc committee to review the city of Danbury snow emergency protocols. In December 2002, I promulgated a new snow emergency protocol with three levels of snow emergency. The system has worked fairly well over the past five years. However, some, some residents and businesses have experienced a degree of confusion regarding the responsibilities. City of Danbury Code of Ordinances, Section 19-60, addresses snow emergencies in a general fashion. I recommend we formalize the City of Danbury Snow Emergency Protocol and consider changes to our ordinances. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
With your pleasure, council. Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with Corporation Council and the Director of Public Works.
No seconds required on a referral. The ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Bassow, Councilwoman Curran, and Councilwoman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Communication, open space and recreation bond.
With your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Negashat?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing.
Motion made to refer to a public hearing. No seconds required. Seeing no objection, as ordered. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, donations to the fire department. Dear Mayor Bowden, members of the county council, I would request the approval of the county council to accept the following donations. One, ice maker from Sears worth $799. Two, replacement back flag and Levelor blinds from Lowe's worth $88.89. These items are for our new fire station, engine number 26. If additional information is needed, do not hesitate to contact me. Respectfully yours, Jeffrey R. Harold, Fire Chief.
With your pleasure, council. Councilman Curran.
I make a motion that we accept the donation and send appropriate letters of thanks to Sears for the ice maker and for Lowe's for the flag and the blind.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by, I'm going to give it to Mr. Sheehan Easie. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ice habit motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Communication, donation to the health department. Dear Mayor Bowden, county council, please note that in response to the needs of the emergency slash homeless shelter program, the Danbury Hospital has graciously provided a $500 donation to match the $500 provided by the United Way to initiate a local interim medical respite program. These funds will be used to initiate an interim respite option for those homeless individuals that are not sick enough to stay in the hospital, but not well enough to use the temporary services at the shelter. Upon approval by the county council, the fund should be deposited into account number HLTHDON6004. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me at any time. Sincerely, Scott Leroy, Director of Health, Housing, and Welfare.
With your pleasure, council. Councilman Seaberry.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept this generous donation, deposit it to account HLTHDON6004, and send a letter of appreciation.
Second.
Made and seconded by Mr. Sheehan Easie again. Quick on the draw. Any discussion about the donation? Ms. Tavasak.
Thank you, your honor. Is it possible that Mr. Leroy could tell us a little bit about this program?
Certainly is. Mr. Leroy, please.
Through the chair. Yeah, the program is actually, it was first initiated by an verbiage by the Tenure Plan and homelessness, and the implementation of the Tenure Plan to end homelessness. It's in there a couple times. But since then, we've had at least one or a couple more incidents at the homeless shelter where there's discharge from the hospital, there's an individual who is not sick enough to stay there, but obviously needs more rest than the seven or eight hours they can get at the homeless shelter, and...
Thank you.
The hospital agrees, and they need to create something, so...
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Bowden, I understand that there's an individual who is having bypass surgery and is going to need the respite care for that reason. Is this adequate, a homeless individual?
Well, if I may. There's an individual who had bypass surgery before, which kind of causes anaphylaxis of sorts, and they're thinking about doing some testing, and they could take advantage of this. It's now in the early stages, but that would be somebody we would work with. I'm in the middle of working with the hospital's social workers right now to try and get us going for that very purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion about the grant? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ice habit motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Communication, donation of a monument. Dear Mayor Bowden, members of the county council, the Amerigo Vespucci Club of Danbury has donated a monument and walkway commemorating Amerigo Vespucci and Christopher Columbus. We would like to place the monument in the southwest quadrant of the city hall grounds. The approximate value of the monument and walkway is $4,000. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next meeting of the county council. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Sincerely, Antonio Idorela, Director of Public Works.
With your pleasure, Councilman Saraceno.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Riley. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Tavasak, and then we'll work our way down.
Thank you, your honor. I guess I couldn't agree more with Margaret Mitchell. I think this is inappropriate for City Hall. I think that, I don't mind if every Saturday we raise a flag of a different country, and I know we do that, Brazil, Portugal, the Philippine flag, the Hybernian flag, but we don't have 70 acres around City Hall, so I think this is a step in the wrong direction. And actually, I'd like to see this donation go to an ad hoc committee so that we could see if there is some other location for this wonderful donation.
I'm going to guess it is, but I'm going to tell you something, council. You're going to be back here again at a special meeting to look at this issue. And certainly, Mrs. Tavasak's right to refer this to an ad hoc, but you will be back this month to deal specifically with this donation, because I am not going to stand out in front of the Vespucci and tell them that we're not going to accept their donation. I think there were some good ideas that were brought forward about a walkway or a walk that we could possibly tie into this, but certainly, when individuals come forward with this kind of project, we want to encourage that and not discourage it. Having said that, the ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Cabo, Councilwoman Bassow, and feels like coming out again this month, we'll say Councilman
Communication, donation to the Park and Recreation Department. Dear Mayor Bowden, council members, the Park and Recreation Department has received a donation to replace the fencing on the left field side of the Rogers Park baseball field. The new fencing will match what currently exists on the right field side of the complex. The Danbury Westerners and Adessi Fencing Company will be donating the fencing materials and installation. The estimated value is $18,000. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next meeting of the county council. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Nicholas Kaplantis, Director of Recreation.
With your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, your honor. I want to make a motion to accept the $18,000 donation from the Danbury Westerners and Adessi Fencing Company and send letters of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Seaberry. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ice habit motion carries unanimously. Item seven was consent. Madam Clerk, item eight.
Communication, ICE access.
With your pleasure, council. Councilman Cabo.
Your honor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to the mayor's office, the Office of Corporation Council, and the Chief of Police for reports, please.
Motion referred to a 30-day reports from the following organizations. Seeing no objection, as ordered. Madam Clerk, item nine, please. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc, the Yellow Pages.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Teicholz.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee, including Corporation Council.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Stanley, Councilwoman Johnson, and Councilman Visconti. Item 10 and 11 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 12, please.
Communication, request for sewer, East Pembroke and Rose Lane.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilman McMahon.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with the Director of Public Works and a report from planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Trimbetta, because he's not here, so it's his tough luck, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Rotella. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Communication, request for sewer, 8 East Haytown Road.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, your honor. I would like to request a report from planning, or I'd like to request an ad hoc committee with a report from planning and Director of Public Works.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Johnson, Councilman Trimbetta, and Councilman Rotella. Madam Clerk, item 14, please.
Communication, request for sewer, 10 East Haytown Road.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, your honor. I'd also like to request an ad hoc committee to include, for 30-day report from planning and the Director of Public Works.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Johnson, Councilman Trimbetta, and Councilman Rotella. Madam Clerk, item 15, please.
Communication, request for sewer, 1012 East Haytown Road.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, your honor. Again, I'd like to request a report from planning and Director of Public Works.
Ad hoc committee.
At an ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Johnson, Councilman Trimbetta, and Councilman Rotella. Madam Clerk, item 16, please.
Thank you.
Communication, request for water, 79 through 81 Sandpit Road.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilman Riley?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item 16 to an ad hoc committee, including Director of Public Works and the Planning Commission for a 30-day report.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Calendrino, Councilwoman McMahon, Councilman Sheenisi. Sorry, done. Madam Clerk, item 18, please.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I stand corrected. Item seventeen, Madam Clerk.
Communication, request for sewer and water, 91 Boulevard Drive.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Teicholz.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee, including Department of Public Works and Planning Commission report.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Calendrino, Councilwoman McMahon, and Councilman Sheenisi. Madam Clerk, item eighteen.
Communication, request for sewer and water, 33 Golden Hill Road.
It's your pleasure, Councilwoman Negashat.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc with the Director of Public Works and a report from planning.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Calendrino, Councilwoman McMahon, and Councilman Sheenisi. Madam Clerk, item nineteen, please.
Communication, easement, Sheridan Commons on Sheridan Street.
It's your pleasure, council. Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, your honor. I want to make a motion to receive the communication and request a 30-day report from planning, zoning, and from the common council.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Item 21 through 20, excuse me, item 20 through 25 were on consent. I stand corrected, item 20 was removed. Madam Clerk, item 20, please.
Resolution, EMPG Grant Emergency Management to Mark Bauton via the common council. Tash, for your review, is a resolution which would allow the City of Danbury Emergency Management Director to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security through the EMPG State and Local Assistance Program. This funding covers 10107 through 93008. The common council has respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting. If you have any questions or should you require any additional information, please contact my office from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance.
It's your pleasure, Councilman Cabo.
Thank you, your honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor, Mark Bauton, or his designee, the Emergency Management Director, to apply for the said funding from the State of Connecticut.
Most are made and seconded by Councilman Curran. Is any discussion? Mrs. Taberak.
Thank you, your honor. Question through you to the Director of Emergency Management, to Mr. Estefan.
Mr. Estefan, please.
I will give him a few minutes to get all the way over there. Thank you, Mr. Estefan. I see that the application has a requirement for the annual updating of emergency operation plans, and I know that earlier this year, there was an issue where the Water Department didn't submit an annual updated plan for the containment of nitrogen, because they thought the Health Department was doing it. Is it your responsibility to provide these annual updated emergency plans?
Our annual updated emergency plans have been approved by Commissioner Thomas from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, and transmitted to the mayor.
So you're in charge of preparing it?
Yes.
No, that particular plan is the waste treatment plan, not the Water Department.
No, I have nothing to do with the
No, I'm talking about, in your grant application, it says you must submit an annually updated emergency operation plan.
That's been completed. It's been approved. It's on file. Be more than happy to make one with a letter available to any member of the council.
Thank you.
Any further discussion relating to the grant? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. I believe the rest of the items were on consent. Mr. President, Department of Reports, please.
Thank you, your honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports, as all council members have copies and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Most are made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Nice job. Discussion, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, your honor. For the record, if I could, I would like to give praise to the Danbury Fire Department along with the Danbury Police Department. There was an outstanding performance regarding the SWAT team. They came in third in the SWAT challenge that took place in Connecticut, third out of 26, if I'm correct. So I'd like to compliment the SWAT team for doing such a great job. Secondly, I'd like to also praise the rank and file of the fire department for doing such an outstanding job regarding the anthrax investigation that seems to be ongoing, but as I understand, they did a commendable job regarding that. Also, the fire at the hangar at the airport, no injuries whatsoever. It was commendable, a commendable performance. And then last, if I could indulge you just for a minute more, note of praise also to the volunteer fire police, who put in something like 384 hours of man-hours, and they're to be commended for their expertise and for doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Riley. Further discussion on department reports. Seeing none, then, I'll try, oh, Mrs. T.
Thank you, your honor. Well, personal privilege.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to personally thank everyone who came out to donate for the Bone Marrow Drive on Saturday, but especially, especially the firefighters. They came out many, many. The room was just filled with blue, and it did my heart. I can't even tell you what it meant to me. So thank all the men and women who came out, and especially Marilyn Gelati, who kind of got the crew together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, your honor. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on department reports? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds in acceptance of the reports. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll extend all committees, council, before you go. This concludes the last meeting of this term. There'll be one more in November. That's sort of the lame duck meeting, and we'll say our goodbyes, but we've got about four weeks to go till Election Day, so those of you that are running for reelection, I want you to keep your wits about you. Remember, at the end of the day, at the end of the night, we all have to live together and work together, and we all want the same things for our community, and so I wish each of you the best of luck, but I also want you to remember, as we go forward, to remember that we're all part of the same larger community. Mr. Visconti?
Thank you. I have the four signs for the corner of South and Main. I'll bring them down tomorrow.
Killing me, Freddie. Killing me. Anyways, good luck to everybody. At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Sadi, seconded by Mr. Seaberry. All in favor?